The brewer who's coming from the other side of Atlanta is talking with Steve on the phone, getting guided in here. He is inside Spalding County, so he's coming in. One, we're going to be a little bit late to getting started first. Secondly, if you've got a seat by you, if you'd let somebody know so that somebody else who's standing against the wall could come and sit, raise your hand or something, we would appreciate it. There are some people who I just really need to be able to sit down. In about just a few minutes when he gets here, Steve has got a couple of things we'll talk about first on another great date, what that looks like for the calendar of events leading up to the decision on what another great will be later next month.
He's been talking now.
If I can get everybody's attention, we'll go ahead and get started. Okay. Okay, we'll see if... Can everybody hear me now?
No.
Okay. I'm using that TV commercial. Can everybody hear me now? All right, can you hear me in the back now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and get started. He's just pulled into the parking lot and will be walking in. I want to make sure everybody understands what this is about and how this is going to work tonight. One, we appreciate you all coming out. Two, this is a presentation from Dante Handel, who I'll talk about in a second, to the board about what HB 581 is about. We're going to try to slow him down and get him to talk in some kind of language that we all understand. He will have a tendency to get into the specific law and what that looks like and the legalese in there. We will try to back him up from that to be able to do this. Before we start, do you want to talk about the dates? Walk? Should he walk in right now?
[laughing]
Ladies and gentlemen, that's Dante Handel. He is the Assistant Director for (applause) for ACCG, the County Commissioners. To us, he is our principal lobbyist to the General Assembly for Revenue and Finance. He has given this presentation, I think this is probably the fifth or sixth time. I've been fortunate enough to listen to it probably three times, and each time I've walked away and said, "Hm, I didn't know that." But we're prepared to ask questions and do that. I don't want to disappoint anybody. This is a presentation from Dante, to us. This is not a town hall. This is not anything like that. This is a presentation to us on what this is going, the impact it's going to have on citizens and the impact it's going to have on our government. All right, so everybody kind of understands. All right. Dante, we've got a place over here for you to come...
He's fine. Just, he's fine that way.
He said you're good there.
He can see everybody.
Okay. That will, yes.
Whatever's his...
Stand right there. Usually the people, if you haven't seen it before, they talk and look at us. This way you'll have a better opportunity to see Dante go through. All right, to begin with, we're going to have, let me start the script that I've got to say because we're doing this. Welcome to Spalding County Board of Commissioners, special called meeting. Today is August 29, 2024. The time is slightly after 6 o'clock. We request that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Flowers-Taylor to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Johnson to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
If you would join me, please, for a moment of silence. If everyone would, please join me in a moment of silence. Father, we come to you this evening in Thanksgiving, thanking you for air, water, and the very earth that we live on. We ask you to be in these rooms tonight to help our brains to understand the information that we're trying to take in and discern. Allow us to be open-minded as this information is brought to us and be, be able to understand the information at the end of this session. I ask for all the blessings that you have given us as your humans, as your persons, in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is also a reminder that this is being livestreamed and taped, so in case something, some part of it you want to go back through again, you'll be able to pull it back up off our website and listen to that same portion again and again and again. All right, Dante, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chairman Davis, members of the board, for having me. Apologize for being a little late, but thank you all for hanging in there for me.
Can everybody hear it? I want to make sure everybody can hear it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, the presentation's discussing House Bill 581, it's a very large property tax and sales tax reform package that passed during the 2024 legislative session. Do I have the ability to change the slides? No.
Yep, well, give them to you.
All right. Well, I guess, beginning by telling you all a bit about me, so name's Dante Handel. I'm on staff with ACCG, the Association County Commissioners of Georgia, so I've been in that role a couple of years, and I'm working on revenue and finance policy items. So, this House Bill 581 definitely falls in my wheelhouse, so a quick...
Dante, if you don't mind, if you would, just let everybody know where you came from, where you were before you were at ACCG.
Yep, spent four years working for the State Department of Revenue before joining ACCG. Yep. So, quick outline of the presentation, so trying to answer some of these questions here. When does the bill take effect? Who's getting the floating homestead exemption? What is it? What is the procedure to opt out? How does that timeline look for local government to do that? What is the new sales tax that's created by House Bill 581? Are there other sales tax revisions? Are there property tax changes? And then some considerations for local governments when making those decisions whether or not to opt out. So, first question is, when does the bill take effect? So, House Bill 581, the entire bill, is contingent upon the passage of a constitutional amendment that's on the ballot in November of this year. Now, that constitutional amendment came from House Resolution 1022, and what it does, it gives local governments the ability to opt out. And so that's why those two things are tied together. The state is the ability to do statewide homestead exemption, but in order for local governments to have the ability to make that choice to get out of it, that requires a change to the Constitution. So, if that constitutional amendment fails, the entire bill fails. The constitutional amendment passes, all of House Bill 581 takes effect on January 1 of next year. So, who gets a floating homestead exemption? Assuming that that referendum passes, every local government, all counties, cities, and schools, starting January 1 of next year, will get a floating homestead exemption. And so, I guess I'd like to take a moment, talk a bit about what exactly a floating homestead exemption is. So, it's a special type of homestead exemption that's designed to offset inflationary increases in value. It's got a couple other names, a base year exemption or a value offset exemption, homestead freezes are also a type of floating homestead exemption. The general idea is you're locking in a base year value, and then if the value of the property increases above that base year... property increases above that base year, it would, your exemption would float to offset all that inflationary increase. So the amount of the exemption changes over time as the value of the home changes. Now, the House Bill 581 exemption is unique in that it has an inflationary component to it, so the taxable value for that homeowner can increase by up to that rate of inflation, which is determined by the State Revenue Commissioner, so the DOR Commissioner, and very likely that figure is gonna be a CPI metric. One of those is what I would expect. So to try and put numbers to it, let's say you have a home that has a fair market value of $250,000, and so the assessed value is 40% or $100,000. So, the way the House Bill 581 exemption works is it takes your 2024 assessed value, so whatever it was, your final value by the end of the year, then that value carries over to 2025, and then every year thereafter, 2026, 2027, and so on, that number that came from 2024 can increase by up to CPI. So let's say you had this $100,000 home, it would increase to $110,000, but inflation is only 2%, CPI is 2%. So the first thing you do is you increase the value from 100 to 102, and then the exemption will be worth 8,000 to offset the rest of inflation. So as long as there is a delta or a difference between that base year value that you have or the adjusted base year value and the fair market value, you're going to increase it by up to inflation in any given year. So that, that is really the core of the floating homestead exemption and how that works. Now, there are some jurisdictions that have existing floating homestead exemptions. The way this bill's written, the House Bill 581 exemption applies, uh, if you have an existing floating homestead exemption, the taxpayer receives whichever of the two provides the largest benefit. Now, all other homestead exemptions that you have that are non-floating, let's say an exemption of a certain amount of assessed value, say an exemption for $2,000 of assessed value, the way that works is you calculate the floating homestead exemption first, and then you add that other exemption on the back end. So it's, it's in lieu of, or it's not in lieu of, it's in addition to those other exemptions. Now, what is the procedure to opt out and what is the timeline? So the procedure is very, very similar to what happens if you don't take a full rollback on your MNO millage rate. So, similar to that public notification of tax increase, you'd have to run three advertisements, hold three public hearings, and then pass a resolution affirmatively opting out. And that process can't begin until January 1 of 2025, when the bill takes effect, and you need to complete the process and get that resolution passed by March 1 of 2025, so essentially you have two months to turn all of that around. It is a one-time opt-out, so if you don't make the decision to opt out, you are in the House Bill 581 floating homestead exemption indefinitely.
Dante, let me...
Yes, sir.
There was a couple of earlier versions that talked about 3%.
Yes, sir.
That all was, all wiped out in the final bill, and we're using CPI.
That is correct.
Consumer, okay.
Yes, sir. So, one more item I want to mention here. So let's say a local government were to opt out of the House Bill 581 homestead exemption. It is possible for the General Assembly to pass a local act, putting y'all back in or putting it to a local referendum. That is definitely something to be aware of. Now, there's a new sales tax that's created under this. It's been largely referred to as the FLOST, but the idea is that it is a new sales tax to be used exclusively for property tax relief. It can be levied in .05% increments up to a full 1% and can run for up to five years at a time. Now, some of the conditions in order to levy that FLOST, the county would have to have a floating homestead exemption, either the one from House Bill 581 or a different local floating homestead exemption. Every city within Spalding County that levies a property tax would have to have a floating homestead exemption, either the 581 homestead or a different one. And if either the county or one city that levies a property tax, no matter the size, doesn't have a floating homestead, then it's dead countywide. It doesn't matter if the schools opt in or out, that won't affect it for the county and the cities because the schools are unable to share in the revenues. So, in order to put that new sales tax to referendum, you need to have an intergovernmental agreement between the county and a city or cities that represents more than 50% of the municipal population within cities in the county that levy a property tax. You can get all the cities to sign, that's definitely allowable in the IGA, but the minimum requirement is to get a city or cities representing more than half the municipal population. If that is what happens, then the other cities that are smaller that didn't sign the intergovernmental agreement are treated as absent municipalities, and they receive a population share based on their population compared against the total municipal population in the county of the cities that levy a property tax. Now, any renewals of the FLOST require a local act from your local delegation of the General Assembly, so it is impossible for the county and cities to renew it without a local bill being passed at the General Assembly. And then there's some language in there at the bottom of this slide referring to a most, but y'all don't have that in Spalding right now, that's in four cities, Atlanta, East Point, College Park, and Haightville. So, assuming that the county and those cities had a floating homestead exemption, y'all got a valid intergovernmental agreement, and you put it to referendum, then that tax begins the next calendar quarter, starting at least 50 days after that referendum date. I think, given that the bill doesn't take effect until January 1st of '25, most realistic time you could do that would probably be November of 2025, at which point, you know, it wouldn't begin until 2026, and then your residents wouldn't see that relief on their tax bills until 2027. So the other requirements under House Bill 581, each taxpayer's property tax bill, assuming that y'all went ahead with that new sales tax, property tax bill needs to state the dollar amount that the taxpayers receive off their bill. And then there's also a requirement about the rollback rate. So the rollback rate gets reduced by the millage equivalent of the total amount of sales tax collected in the preceding calendar year. So in this case, if you pass in '25, collect in '26, 2027 is when you'd see that, and that's when you'd have the reduced rollback rate, and it's when they'd see it on the tax bill. Now, I mean, I'd be glad to stop and answer any questions y'all had on those, those pieces, or I'm glad to keep moving with the PowerPoint, whatever you'd prefer Chairman Davis.
Let's just kind of back up here and make sure everybody in the audience has got this.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, the idea from the General Assembly is that we're going to stop massive ups and downs in the appraisals that we're, we're getting done. Sometimes it's 18, 19, 20%, sometimes... Okay, sometimes it's a lot less than that. So the General Assembly's issue is to try to control that, so it's not, so for the homeowners, this is a very good thing for them.
Yes.
I'm looking, that's their, their view of this from our legislators is, this is a very good thing because it's going to reduce the fluctuation of their doing. And most of the CPIs, 2, 3, 4, somewhere in that category, as opposed to ours last year was 19% or something like that. So, it's gonna reduce that down to be able to do that.
Yes, you're, you're correct across the board on all those. I believe the intent is to prevent those very large jumps for the homeowners. Just important to keep in mind that it's only for residential homesteaded properties, no other property tax types.
Okay, so homeowners issues for us. The second part of that is making sure we understand, if we reduce that number, that's the revenue that's coming into us from homeowners taxes, and we want to maintain the same services, we have a delta that we've created, that means theoretically, millage rates are gonna go up to maintain the same kind of revenue to provide the services.
Yes, sir. So it, it's an equation, so the values times the millage is gonna equal the money coming in for y'all to meet your budget, and if we are putting downward pressure on the values by not increasing them the way the market dictates, that will put upward pressure on your millage rate.
Okay, so everybody should understand, this is a good thing for homeowners. It will stop massive number shifts back and forth. For the county, this is gonna be a problem for us because as we reduce revenue to maintain the services that we're providing now, we're go, the millage rate is gonna go up. Now, it's a good and bad, both sides of it. We don't know how bad, how big this is gonna be yet, but it, this is why this briefing has happened, so we would understand what that looks like as we go through it. Comments from the smart guy?
Am I the smart guy, Chairman Davis?
Yeah.
I mean, I would say it's, it's a policy consideration. It does result in a tax shift from your residential homesteaded properties to all other property types within your county, so all residential, non-homesteaded, all industrial, commercial, and agricultural.
Can I jump in and ask a question to the county manager real quick? So can you tell us in lame terms, because you gave us dollar amounts, what this would have, how, how this would affect the county, more so in percentages?
Yes, ma'am. We, we went back nine years and used one property to assess what the impact would be for our community from a revenue side for the county services. If we utilized the CPI for the last nine years, there was a 20% reduction in revenue for the county services. That's a significant number. That would require a very large increase in our millage rate to maintain the same level of revenue coming in. But it, as Dante did indicate, this is, it's more of a tax shift to non-homesteaded properties that would be, who would carry the, the larger burden of the, the revenue requirements coming in. It would not alleviate some of the revenue increases to the homesteaded properties because of the increase in the millage rate that would be required.
So you also have an idea, in the unincorporated area, we are 70% homeowner, 30% rental, generally speaking. In the city, it is exactly the opposite, correct? It is 30% homeowners, 70% rental. We're talking about homeowners, homestead exemptions. Make sure everybody's kind of got this. This is about people who own their home versus people who are renting. If I'm saying something wrong, Dante, please don't hesitate to jump in there. Okay.
And I do want to make sure that we understand that the math works when we do vote in the referendum for the floating local option sales tax, which is an additional penny at the cash register. Without that additional penny at the register, I, I would love to hear Dante's perspective on what happens if the, the county does not vote that additional penny in as a sales tax.
Sure. So, thinking about this legislation, how it came together, I mean, you, you were definitely right Chairman Davis about trying to protect the homeowners and protect them against large increases in their value, and then I, I think there was some thought given that it results in a tax shift from those homesteaded properties to all the other property types, and if they were to add this sales tax, and that sales tax passes at referendum in your jurisdiction, then that provides some relief across the board to all property types. So, your residential homesteaded and non-homesteaded, industrial, commercial, agricultural, everyone gets some sort of benefit of that reduction. Now, if, if that sales tax doesn't pass, or for some reason y'all were unable to get an intergovernmental agreement to move forward with it, then we're, we're back to where we started, talking about a tax shift from residential homestead to all other property types. And I would like to add that over a greater time horizon, the impacts of a floating homestead exemption increase pretty sharply. So I, I know we have a jurisdiction in the state, one of our counties put in a local constitutional freeze back when there were local constitutional amendments, this is in the early 80s, and they have a couple properties where they're right next to one another, similar age of property, similar construction, same lot size, same square footage, and one of those properties was paying, I think, about $4,400 in sales, or in, in property tax a year, the other property's paying about $7.79. And so, and the only reason that property was paying anything is because it, that freeze didn't apply to bonded indebtedness. Now, the way the House Bill 581 floating homestead exemption works is you keep that exemption until the property sells, and once it sells, it resets to the current market value. So it's definitely possible to have two homeowners live right next to, to one another in comparable properties, and they could be paying very different amounts in property tax each year.
Dante, if you don't mind, if you could share with us a little bit more about the impact this has on, on our school taxes in the school system.
Sure. Yep, that's a fine question. So, unlike the county, the school's got a lot more limits on the range of potential millage rates. So, the, the school's got a lower bound at 14 mills. If the school were to drop below 14 mills, they lose equalization monies from the state. If the schools hit a, an upper bound 20-mill cap, the only way they can go above that is to put it to local referendum, asking the voters in the county permission to go above 20 mills. Now, I'm not sure the exact number of jurisdictions that have done that, but I believe it's only a handful, somewhere around five, give or take three. So they, they definitely have some difficulties in, in those areas. They don't have the flexibility that the county does to increase the millage rate if needed.
All right, so let's kind of dumb that down for me. In other words, for the school districts, this is gonna be devastating.
Yeah, it, it certainly puts them in a bind where if, if we play it out over a long enough time horizon, they eventually need to increase their millage rate, and they have that 20-mill bound, and so that could be a problem. Also, depending where the school's millage rate is, if they needed to roll back below 14, they'd be in danger of losing that equalization money from the state. So that, those are definitely considerations for them that the county doesn't have to
In case everybody is looking at me and you see me looking over, the superintendent of our school district is here, and this is the second time we've talked about this, and both times, his eyes are, are big. This is a problem for the school district, just like it's gonna be a problem maybe for us on the millage rate as we go along. For the citizen homeowners, this is very, very good. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
Dante, so I, I get it that the floating...
Mike.
Sorry. The floating rollback, um, the, the, the floating tax will be for property owners. That's property owners, whether you're in the city or the county. Does it also affect the value or value increases for commercial property or industrial property?
Yes, ma'am, it, it would. So, the intergovernmental agreement is specifying the split of that new sales tax between the county and the city. The city uses its portion to take a portion off the city tax bill, and the county's using it across the county. So, any of those commercial or industrial properties are gonna be located somewhere in the county or in the city, and so they're gonna receive a reduction, at least on the county one and potentially on both.
Ready for questions?
So the, the CPI goes for every property in terms of determining whether or not the, there is an increase in the cost?
No, ma'am, the, the CPI is only for residential homesteaded properties, so every other property tax type will be adjusted the same way it was before this law took effect.
Okay, that was the question that I was asking.
Yep, that's...
So, that, that, I'm still, I'm still confused, because I thought you said that those properties would come, would be affected the same way a residential property would be. I mean, if, if the county tax assessor office is doing reassessments, and, and they determine that we need to be at 3% or 4% or whatever the CPI is, is that property value going to freeze for a commercial or an industrial? That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
So, so, no, the property value doesn't freeze for any type other than those residential homestead, and it's, it's not a freeze, they're still increasing by up to the rate of inflation.
Right.
And I think where I misunderstood you is the, the sales tax, if y'all were to pass it, the benefit of that sales tax applies to all properties.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so let's, let's, let's back, back up again to the opt-out.
Okay.
We have until March timeframe to make... We have until March timeframe to make a decision on opting out of this, of this situation, correct?
Correct.
Two points on that. One, if we decide, is there a possibility that we would be pushed back into it?
There, there is a possibility if your local delegation to the General Assembly passes a local act for Spalding County to implement another floating homestead exemption, which they could make identical to the House Bill 581 exemption, or they could structure it differently. And then it goes directly to a referendum countywide, regardless of how the county commission feels about it. Same would be true for the schools, same could also be true for the cities.
Okay, so, yes. And what, when he talks about local legislators, we're talking about Representative Mathiak, probably my representative Beth Camp, and Senator Marty Harbin. Those local legislators go to the General Assembly, and if it just applies to Spalding, they can put stuff through fairly easy because it's only their one county. And it just kind of rubber stamped and voted on through. Probably not the right political words, but it gets right on through. Those people could turn around and say, Board of Commissioners, you've opted out, we don't think that's the right thing to do for your citizens, and could send a, a legislation to the General Assembly, General Assembly approves it, and we're back in it again. So I want to make sure everybody understands that although we may think we're going to be the end result on the decision to do this, it could be the local legislators get involved. I have, so everybody knows, I've asked our great county manager to come up with a series of questions that we aren't thinking about while we're looking at you all, so we'll let him kind of run through this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dante, just some questions that we've been asked over the last few days, expecting your, your participation here. Just for clarity, the valuations of our homesteaded properties, that is what's being capped?
Yes, sir. Only for residential, homesteaded properties, no other property types.
And the millage rates are not being capped, so we could adjust the millage rate to meet the requirements of revenue.
Also, correct. Yes, sir.
So there are some comparative, there are some comparative laws that are on the books in Texas, Colorado, Pennsylvania, and the one in California, Proposition 13, probably received the highest advertisement. How does House Bill 581 compare to Proposition 13 out of California?
So, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on this, because it's been a while since I've taken a look at Proposition 13, but I, I think there was a cap on the overall tax rate that could be charged to each taxpayer, not just a cap on the millage.
So the information that we received, Proposition 13 caps property tax rates at 1% of the purchase price and limits annual increases in assessed value to 2% until the property is sold. This results in a significant disparity where identical properties, as you discussed earlier, can have vastly different tax liabilities. But the, it, it appears that, just in cursory review, that House Bill 581 is mirrored after Proposition 13.
There, there are definitely similarities. House Bill 581 is only capping the mill, or not capping the millage, only capping the assessed value of the property will, will not impact in the millage, so that, there's no cap on the tax rate on that property. That, that can certainly be adjusted any which way.
Okay. And without the, the vote for the floating local option sales tax, a positive vote by our community, it really does have a dramatic impact on the revenues that come into the county.
Yes, sir. It, it does, and no matter how you slice it, it's going to result in a tax shift from those residential, homesteaded properties to all other property types.
Okay. What are, what do you see from your position, or from ACCG's position? What do you see as the long-term effects of this bill on Georgia real estate?
Yep. It's a fine question. I, I think over a long enough time horizon, you're going to see similar effects to that county I was mentioning before, where they've had that local constitutional amendment freezing the values, where you, you see the age of the community growing as folks become less willing to sell their homes and move somewhere else, because you could buy a home, say, two doors down, and that resets your value. And so you'd end up paying a significantly larger amount in tax because of that difference in the value. You know, ultimately, I guess it slows the real estate market for those homesteaded properties and convinces folks to stay in your community longer. It disincentivizes them to move.
So it, it's, it's kind of disparaging toward our younger population, our younger neighbors who are coming in wanting to purchase a home, because it does reset their, their property tax values, and they're paying the greater share of the property tax.
Yes, sir. It, it is a benefit for the folks who purchased the property earlier, and, and it's a disadvantage for those folks who are purchasing the properties down the line.
How do you see this as an impact to our economic development within our community?
So I'd, I'd say that one's going to depend community by community, but there is a tax shift to all of your business properties. And so I guess it depends what that shift looks like in each individual county. So without seeing Spalding's numbers, I can't say definitively, but there is a tax shift.
Okay. What do you see as the risk moving forward?
So I, I still go back to thinking about it as an equation, where if, if you're, if you are capping those values, so you're keeping them artificially low with this floating homestead exemption as opposed to the, the true fair market value of those properties, over a long enough time horizon, it will force y'all to increase your millage rates. And I guess it just depends what that looks like for your community down, down the line, but I see an increase down the line as inevitable.
I had one more, please forgive me. So with respect to our friends at Griffin Spalding School System, if, if you do the comparative analysis against Proposition 13 in California and House Bill 581, the reduced property tax revenue is, in California, has led to underfunding of public services, particularly the public schools contributing to some educational inequities. How do we respond to House Bill 581 with respect to the school system?
Yeah, it, it definitely puts the schools in a much more tenuous position than it does for the county, especially with that 20 mil cap over a long enough time horizon. It, it very likely forces the schools to put that to referendum, to all the voters in Spalding County, to increase the millage rate above the 20 mils.
And doesn't that hurt us as homeowners, because we're paying a higher millage rate?
It, it could, and, I mean, it, it will increase the, the tax rate when the millage rate is increased, and that is going to affect all those non-homesteaded properties more than it affects those residential, homesteaded properties. So that'll have a larger impact on your business community.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. All right, that's really two, two parts of 581 that we've covered. You have a number of other parts, let's kind of run through the rest of them if you wouldn't mind, so that we get all the rest of them in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Davis. So some other sales tax revisions in the bill, there's a 2% sales cap in the state on local sales taxes, but there are far more exceptions than taxes that actually apply under that rule. So one thing that House Bill 581 did is it restructures that to clean it up, so it's a bit easier to understand. So now the sales taxes that are exempt fall into three categories. So ESPOST going to the schools, that's one of the exempted pennies, up to 1% of transportation sales taxes, so that's all the TSPLOST types, and MARTA for the counties that have those. And then one of the specialty pennies is also exempted, so these are the OLOSTs, which is another lost for Columbus, Muskogee, and Macon Bibb. Augusta Richmond has a Coliseum SPOST. The new sales tax, that's created by House Bill 581, and then the most for Atlanta and those three cities interconnected with it. But I guess the important thing here to, to note is that the new sales tax created by House Bill 581 is one of those exempted pennies. And since y'all don't have any of those other ones in that bucket in Spalding County, y'all are eligible for it, assuming that the county had a floating homestead exemption, all the cities had a floating homestead exemption.
So everybody remember, we're at seven cents now on sales tax. If we bring in the other tax that he's talking about, we'll go to eight cents on the dollar at the cash register, which was used to reduce the property tax. So I want to make sure everybody gets it down into what we're, my mind thinks about, seven to eight on the, on the issue, if we vote that, if we make that an option for us to do. Thank you. Continue on.
So another change is there is a tax estimate that has been included on your notice of assessment each year in the bottom right-hand corner. And so that tax estimate is being removed under House Bill 581, and the reasoning for that is because it's based on the updated value, but the last year's millage rate, because the current year's millage isn't set at that point in time, it also hasn't factored in exemptions or credit, so that number's almost always inaccurate. Now, something that's being added to your notice of assessment to sort of replace it is this concept of an estimated rollback rate, where each local government, the, the counties, the cities, and the schools would submit their estimated rollback rate to the tax commissioner and the tax assessor early in the year to be included on the notice of assessment. And then if the local governments later set a millage rate above that number, there's a disclaimer that goes on the property tax bill stating that that local government raised taxes.
And we, the county, as an example, will set that right.
Yeah, the, the county will set it for the county M and O, the school set it for the school, city sets it for the city.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Another change is some language in there that concerns the Department of Audits and Account Sales Ratio Study, so there was some language that went into law in 2010 that said that whatever the sales price was for a property in a given year is the maximum value that can be placed on it for tax purposes the year following. That changed the Department of Audits and Accounts methodology, which has caused counties to score very poorly on that sales ratio study. And the reason that y'all would care is the county commission, and, and that the good folks in the audience may care, is if y'all score poorly on that study, then the public utilities, so any electric utilities, railroads, they end up paying less on their property tax bill based on how far below the market value you were. So they end up getting a discount on their taxes, which ultimately gets made up throughout the county through a higher millage rate on all of y'all.
This is a really good, so everybody understands, this is a really good thing for, that's trying to clean it up for us. For two years, we've had to appeal because our numbers have not been where the state says the numbers should be on our sales ratio. This year, the numbers are just out, and we're in where they're supposed to be. But this was, for two years, an issue of we were going to lose money, physical tax dollars to come back to us, because we were not in the sweet spot of where the state said we should be on sales ratio.
Dante, I've got a follow-up question on that as well. For the change in the law language, under the DOAA versus the DOR, as far as the sales ratios are concerned, are they moving us back, is the state moving us back to the DOR calculations, which for, for us, we look backwards on the DOR? The DOA looks forward six months, DOR looks backward six months, so it actually affords us the opportunity to redefine what that percentage, that sales ratio percentage is? And it cleans up the language, so we're more in line to be at the 38 percentile?
So my understanding of that is that we're, we're realigning the data sets so that the Department of Audits and Accounts and the tax assessors in your county are looking at the same data, as opposed to DOAA being able to look months and months ahead in the following year and then project backwards. The Department of Revenue is taking the Department of Audits and Accounts number verbatim. And so if we fix it on one, it ends up fixing it for y'all on both.
That's actually good news.
Great news for us. Thank you. Okay, continue on.
So the, the next change that was made by House Bill 581 concerns the three-year lock. So this is when a taxpayer was appealing their property value, whatever value was coming out of that BOE hearing was locking for the following two years. This was something that was originally put into law with the intent of being taxpayer-friendly, and, and I think over time, we found it having the opposite effect of actually being taxpayer-unfriendly. So we're looking at some data, and we're seeing that a lot of institutional investors and hedge funds were buying up significant amounts of properties and then filing mass appeals all at once on every single one of those properties. So it could be 1,000 properties at a time. I saw in one county, one entity filed 1,800 appeals all in one go, and the values were locking on all 1,800 properties. Now, when that happens, it results in a shift of that tax burden from that institutional investor to every other entity in the county. So each of y'all on, on your own homes were paying part of that difference. I think Spalding County pulled a lot of the numbers they were showing, where that tax shift was about $1.2 million a year. Fulton County pulled it, and it was about $56 million a year. So it, it definitely adds up quick, and it's an issue that's gotten worse and worse over time. The other thing is because that value locks for the next two years, you actually see a, a bigger effect from those folks who locked the year before and the year before that. So it, it's an issue that's been getting worse. The change that was made is so that when a taxpayer appeals their value, they need to get a value reduction. So what we were seeing for these entities filing the mass appeals is they don't actually disagree with the value, they're filing solely for that lock. So if they're going to the Board of Equalization and, and not getting a dollar off, why are they being rewarded? So this, this language should fix that issue moving forward, and I think it's a positive change. So we, we were talking about this, removing that confusing tax estimate from the assessment notice, I, I think that should make it easier to understand. House Bill 581 also updated the Settlement Conference statute. There was a loophole where a taxpayer could potentially not advance their appeal in good faith and receive kind of an indefinite 15% discount while they were hanging out in, in limbo, so to speak. Now, down the line, they'd eventually have to pay it, but you could have situations where an entity were to go under in the business fold, and then the county would be left holding the bag on that one. So that's where that change came from. There's also a requirement that the chief appraiser in each county ensure that every parcel be appraised at least every three years, and that's to try to make sure that values are being held current. And I believe we were talking about several of these items throughout our, our discussion, but definitely a longer, a larger effect, given a longer time horizon, the taxes don't disappear, they only shift, so in the case of the House Bill 581 floating homestead exemption from residential, homesteaded properties to all other property types. One, one other thing to consider, I don't know if Spalding County has special service districts, but this House Bill 581 exemption does apply, the special service districts applies to every millage levy except for the bond levy. So that, that is, it's an area where the other counties that have existing floating homestead exemptions, that's not captured, for the most part, they don't apply to the special service districts, this one does, and I just wanted to point that out. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that y'all may have.
All right, why don't you take a breath for a second and think of any thoughts you would like to wrap up with us? Can you talk about dates for the millage rate discussion? This is just an early advance, we're going to send this out tomorrow, I think, and the next day, and it'll be in the paper in a week or so, or something like that.
Yes, sir. So notice of property tax increase in our five-year history, the, the notices will be posted next Friday, September 7th, in our Griffin Daily News, and also on our website. We will hold two date public hearings. The first public hearing will be held at 10 o'clock on September 16th in this room. The second hearing will be held September 16th at 6 o'clock in this room. And then the third public hearing will be held September the 26th at 6:05 in this room. Those will be our three public hearings. Those will be our three public hearings for this year's millage rate.
Commissioners, other comments or questions before we let Dante get back on the road, going back home?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, this isn't, this isn't the opportunity to do that. This is a one-way conversation, unfortunately, to us with an opportunity for everybody to listen to do that. We're not starting a public, this isn't a public hearing, per se. This is not a town hall, we're just trying to make sure everybody has an opportunity to, while Dante is explaining, to understand, instead of just reading the law by itself. Dante, any final comments?
No other final comments about House Bill 581, but just wanted to thank y'all very much for your time, appreciate you having me out.
Mr. Chairman, would there be an opportunity for those folks in the audience who do have questions to submit questions to maybe the county manager, and then he can get them answered from Dante?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I'm sure people have specific questions.
You can always do that, not just on House Bill 581, but if you have questions on the government side of the House and what's going on, you can surely send those through the website, it's very easy to do, and get them to the county manager, and he can get his staff or himself to go ahead and respond to this. This is, we'll vote, everybody who votes is going to vote on this on the, in the November ballot. I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity, because sometimes the legalese on the ballot is a little complicated to understand. It has big impacts that we haven't seen before on homeowners, non-homeowners, and on the government.
Mr. Chairman, question.
Yes.
Will this information, does that have to be posted anywhere on our county website where we can have people review it, or is it too soon for that?
Actually, House Bill 581 and Dante's presentation are a part of this evening's agenda, so they are on the website right now. And we do encourage our community to go and visit the website and review what Dante's put out for us. Yes, ma'am.
That is available on the website.
You can go over it, you know, we have it, it's taped there.
PowerPoint is not on Grannicus.
Oh, please forgive me, we will post the Grannicus PowerPoint, we'll post the PowerPoint on Grannicus tonight.
Okay. And you can go back through and watch it on the streaming, back it up, watch it again, back it up, watch it again, to be able to get it. All right, any last minute thing? All right, once again, thank you Dante, we truly appreciate that for you coming. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I just gave you one.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.